We have the, we're in presentation mode. Great. And so again, th- thank you all for joining us as a part of this little bit of an intro. Maryland, the state of Maryland passed this legislation in two thousand and eight, nine regarding the requirement for planning commissioners and board of appeals members to take this training. And at the time, we, uh, we joined a group of nine other states that do require this. So, um, it, it is first of all, I want to thank you very much for volunteering and being a providing service to your community. Uh, we appreciate that. We know that it's not an easy job. Uh, often asking a lot of our few at little to no compensation. So again, thank you very much for that, uh, commitment to your communities. Next slide. So again, th- th- as I noted before, this is a virtual training and we will be, uh, doing, uh, breakout comment sections, uh, include those comments during the Q and A. And so we'll, we'll cover those at that point and, uh, want to thank you again for your participation. Next, next slide. As noted, uh, on this slide, uh, it's for planning commissioners, but it's, uh, and board of appeals, but it really covers the full game gamut of jurisdictions. So the non-charter charter counties as well as the municipalities are supposed to take this within six months of becoming, uh, a member. Many people will take this more than one time because, uh, and I think I give credit to our, our, our legal counsel while they find lots of interesting, uh, information in there. Uh, and, and there was an opportunity to ask some really, uh, relevant questions to your experiences at the local level. So again, thank you very much. And next slide. This training is the virtual version of what we have online. Our version that's online is a little dated, uh, but it's actually a more robust version than, than this version we have. But we want, uh, we welcome any comments you may have on it and we'll continue to expand on that. Uh, we are taking, uh, attendance and we will, uh, be sending a certificate out to those. Uh, and we post those that the planning commissioners that are, uh, or have received the training online so that, uh, folks know that you've taken the training. Next slide. And again, thank you again for your service and hopefully, uh, feel free to, to ask questions. We want to encourage this question because, um, we, we give you the generic version of this thing and what really becomes, uh, relevant to you, um, and your work experience and your, your volunteering experience is, is, you know, how does this impact your, uh, role? So we really want to, um, work with you to find out how these, uh, this training can be relevant to your, uh, everyday experiences as planning commissioners and board of appeals members. And again, thank you again for that. Next slide. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, Joe, uh, director, planning best practices, Adam and myself, we're going to be doing the training. And, uh, next slide. And without further ado, good. Next slide. We're going to go into foundations and I think Joe, you're going to handle this. Again, thank you.
Okay. Um, so I know this is the, the small. Microphones in here, right in here, but you have to understand that we have a hybrid audience and they're going to hear us unless we have these microphones. So hopefully that doesn't get staticky. I'll try to keep it down, but, um, it's the only way for them to hear us. So if they're, when we get into the question and answer period, I have a microphone that I'll ask you all to speak into. Otherwise the people in the virtual audience won't hear. All right. So we're going to talk about, uh, Maryland specifically here. Maryland has always been a magnet for growth. We're, we're both of the nation's capital. You know, American miniature. I'm sure you've all heard it. Mountains, Chesapeake Bay, uh, you know, ninety-five eastern seaboard, which, you know, magnets for growth, especially our smaller size as a state. Planning has always been of significant importance, uh, and a lot of focus and dedication has been put on the profession, the, the discipline. All right. So Maryland is one of the smaller states in, in the nation, as you probably could imagine. But, uh, only eighteen states have more people. Uh, so that just essentially means that we're a denser state than the majority in. Uh, again, that's another reason why it's taken such a strong focus here. All right. Um, look, you'll learn a lot about the history of good planning in Maryland and around the country throughout this class. Both Maryland planners do, uh, they help determine the efficient land use for homes, stores, churches. Uh, and they protect resources like farms, forests, uh, and others. What other kinds of resources would you, do you, that you're familiar with that planners, uh, both citizen and professional are tasked with, um, preserving? Uh, probably. Groundwater. Okay. I'm not going to pass the microphone around for this. Probably take the groundwater. Give me one more. I'm repeating it to the virtual audience. Chesapeake Bay critical areas, very specific example. Yep. Thank you. We're going to look a little bit at agricultural preservation. Uh, there's a lot of programs in Maryland focused on this. There's the priority preservation areas, uh, are designations for lands that contain productive agricultural or forest soils and support profitable agricultural and forest enterprises. Uh, they're governed by local policies that stabilize the agricultural and forest land base. So the development does not convert or compromise agricultural or forest resources. So the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, which has very awkward acronym of MELTS. And this, it's the state's land preservation entity governed by the Maryland Department of Agriculture or MDA. Uh, it was established in nineteen, so it shows you how far it goes back. Uh, and it purchases agricultural preservation easements that forever restrict on prime farmland. Is rural legacy program, the Maryland Department of Planning, me, Chuck and Adam are all from, uh, sits on the rural legacy board. Uh, and rural legacy provides funding through the Department of Natural Resources. A lot of different agencies are involved in this to preserve large contiguous tracts of land to enhance natural resource, agricultural forestry and environmental protection, while supporting a sustainable land base for natural resource based industries. The Maryland Department of Planning in, with, in partnership with a lot of the agencies I've already mentioned, developed and maintains the land preservation dashboard. Uh, if this is a topic of interest to you, I encourage you to, to check it out. Spent too much time on it today, but it's designed to help users assess the status of Maryland's preservation effort. Popular and. Uh, and this was created in coordination with DNR. The spatial data analysis unit, uh, that is our GIS staff. It incorporates data from local, state, federal and non-governmental preservation. You can see percentages right there. Okay. So continuing on with the history of good planning, planners help protect historic resources as well. The sustainable community's tax credit has helped rehabilitate about forty-four hundred historic buildings and create twenty-five thousand jobs since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, the state's investment of about three hundred and fifty million has reached into all of Maryland's twenty-three counties and the city of Baltimore. I continue with historic preservation here. Uh, the Maryland Historic Trust, which is actually a part of the Maryland Department of Planning, they're based out of Crownsville, is Maryland State Historic Preservation Office. Might hear a SHIPO is the common acronym. Uh, yeah, became part of MVP in two thousand and five. The trust mission focuses on it. Share past and it complements empty. It's future. Responsibilities, I'm not going to go into all the detail here, but, uh, they are responsible undertaking the survey and documentation of both archit- and archaeological resources. Survey work is done in partnership with local governments, not just the state level and nonprofit organization. Uh, they do complete survey documentation, including written reports, photographs, maps, and they're all included in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties, which is made available through, uh, to the public through the internet, or you can go visit, uh, the trust office in Crownsville. All right. Continue on here. The trust administers several programs. It's not just search documentation. Their review and compliance program and admit minister. Properties as well, uh, will not be adversely affected by or destroyed by the actions. Or any. Federal. Uh, they also oversee. View process here, you know, I might be familiar with of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six and the Maryland, Maryland's own Historical Trust Act of nineteen eighty-five. Then the Historic Preservation Easement Program is the highest form of protection for any, uh, available for any historic, archaeological or cultural resources. Uh, MHT receives actions of gift assessment. Twenty-two historic properties, um, including the Clifton Mansion in Baltimore City, like other clinicals. And their efforts to, uh, protect historic properties through historic area zoning ordinances and. Like chap in Baltimore City. MHT is required to update its state historic preservation five years. They just recently updated that this year. And it was completed in twenty twenty-four. Heritage twenty thirty-one's vision is to protect and share Maryland's diverse cultural heritage, bust right awareness, belonging and stewardship among our communities. Did you hear? Okay. Um, so our question to you is. Recognize it before options. Frederick. Okay. We have some other ones, but. Chuck, uh, he lives in Frederick. So he, he, his, you'll see his hands all over this presentation. It's not Copenhagen, not any of these. There we go. That's it. Okay. Let's get into a little bit of the history here, uh, and Adam will give you some more history when we get to the legal section. Because history planning is long, uh, in nineteen sixty, city adopted the first comprehensive zoning regulations to apply citywide, uh, which became a model for zoning throughout the rest of the country. Uh, and this early zoning regulated height, bulk and use. Uh, the federal government got into the action too, because in nineteen eighty-two, they, uh, developed the standard zoning enabling act, which was the Department of Commerce, then run by Herbert Hoover. Uh, there's a model law drafted by that agency that states could use to delegate zoning to local governments and many did. Daniel Burnham, very famous, the guy in the bottom right, uh, in the history of planning, took a leading role in the creation of master plans for the development of several cities, including Chicago and Washington DC. Chicago is also, is very famous in the early, um, history of planning in the US. Uh, and his state, his, uh, idea or his famous phrase was make no small plans. Back then it was real grand. And that's how it was envisioned. Um, things have changed, uh, but still a lasting impact on the planning profession. Also quite famous advanced redevelopment in Philadelphia and Longston as the plant director there, very influential. Okay. So the plans for big enough cities at the turn of the twentieth century recommend extensive development and redevelopment, huge infrastructure prob, uh, projects primarily to accommodate their booming, booming populations that are attracted to the jobs of the city. Uh, this often resulted in iconic achievements, what many of us consider, um, when we consider our biggest cities and return on the investments. However, in the mid-century, uh, you know, things always change in the urban renewal. Some of these big plans resulted in the widespread destruction of existing neighborhoods for urban highways or other infrastructure projects, um, creating many problems that we're still trying to fix today. You know, it's dark corners. And planning is just like the rest. Some quotes here. All right. For example, of it though, actually no, hold off on the. Okay. So I was talking about urban renewal. Famous, not a, a citizen planner. A lot of us are citizen planners here. Uh, her book, The Death and Life of Great American Cities is essential reading for any planning student. So, uh, she really pushed back against urban renewal. Um, and she, she rose to prominence when, uh, Robert Moses. There's a famous book, I think it's called Power Broker about him. Robert Moses was very influential New York City official, uh, in the mid-century in the modernist area. He, he attempted to extend Fifth Avenue directly through Washington Square Park. And she organized stiff community-based resistance that eventually, uh, got Moses to scrap his plans. Uh, in death and life, uh, Jacobs contended that cities were complex systems, that they should be filled with people and that density was good. That people and activity on streets provided not only a liveliness and a vitality to a city, but also provided safety and security through her famous term eyes on the street or natural surveillance. Bottom line, she argued that planning ought to be about people, not buildings. So you see that transition from the turn of the century. Idea of planning, um, to more people focused, more granular. Uh, and these, some of her ideas, um, are definitely key components of the plan efficient. So why do we plan? Uh, first and foremost is so that we can guide sustainable and efficient land use of our, our use of our land. It also helps us figure out how much public infrastructure, such as water, sewer codes, community facilities like schools. We need to support our population. It helps us protect sensitive resources, wetlands, uh, forests. It's very, very interdisciplinary disciplinary and has many different areas of focus. You know, there's planners that's are very specialized and focus on very specific things and there's some that are more generalized. But I, I always joke, like, when I tell people that I'm a planner and they don't know what planning is, they always think that I can fix the potholes on their street. Um, but you know, we typically take a much broader view than that. Some planners may focus on that. Uh, but it's often not really known in the, the larger world with planners. Essentially it takes foresight and, and a focus on a long-term planning horizon. All right. The what is, with the role of planning is to understand physical landscape and diverse and make population. It's about people and place, uh, to gauge the appropriateness of developments and the capacity to fit them into the whole. So it's greater than the sum of its parts and to combine incentive, different ideas to provide a vision that appeals to residents. Often this idea of seeking for and implementing the public interest. All right. Um, but as we also saw earlier, hey Sarah, welcome. The role of planning has not always been a positive force in America, probably the rest of the world as well. Going back even farther than urban and earlier, and with the support of new deal policies, planning and planners also contributed to racial segregation and social injustice. In the thirties, the federal homeowners loan corporation created residential security or red line maps. Many of you probably heard of red line maps of major American cities. Here's Baltimore's red line map, um, one of the first ones in the nation. The areas shown in red, which were predominantly African-American neighborhoods were labeled hazardous and therefore mortgage lenders and appraisers denied services, loans and capital investment within the red line. The new deal's federal housing administration denied minority households access to the federally backed guaranteed mortgage loans created through the National Housing Act of nineteen thirty-four. If you're to compare this map to, uh, to a map of, um, poor economic and health indicators in Baltimore city today, you'll see a striking overlap. So essentially the refusal will provide the same housing. Finance benefits the families of color. Leaders significantly contributed to today's wealth gap. But there are also, there are other examples for local planning for what I would equity throughout our history, restrictive covenants protect, protect, preventing families from purchasing homes within certain neighborhoods, strengthen de facto residential segregation. And even to this day exclusionary zoning, which limits the supply of and access of affordable housing through minimum lot size and single residence per lot requirements, minimum square footage requirements. And other zoning restrictions has significantly driven up the price of housing and set kept holds out of certain areas of community. And finally budgets demonstrate priorities. Sparked or can jurisdictions have prioritized capital investment such as that for infrastructure, recreational uses and community facilities and wealth. Probably if you were going to number the different sessions while you're here, this, these next couple, hear a lot about equity. Planning equity as opposed to the inequitable examples I just gave you is acknowledging the sometimes ugly history of planning. Even if current staff and if they did not contribute to the, they serve in positions that's still represented and sometimes need to go out of their way to overcome a legacy of distrust that is often well deserved. Planners planning for equity need to be as deliberate in their approach as those who are planning for inequity in the past. Is made to lead to discomfort, but this is a vital part of the process. You need to listen, over explain. Plan for equity requires that everyone, particularly those historically served, participate authentic process. Um, some examples are both city and Howard counties. Planning academies, Prince George's County also recently implemented one, um, which build community education and leadership around planning and zoning issues. All right, let's see. Um, planning organizations also need to look internally, planning for equity. Do we look like and represent the stakeholders we are supposed to serve? Uh, equity lens using the planning decision-making process to get to that resource allocation issue I was talking about earlier. That can lead to more racially and economically equitable policies and programs. Capital investment can be consciously directed under served communities. You're familiar, I'm not how, if you're familiar with Arnstein's ladder of public participation, a classic, um, concept in planning is, uh, aims towards authentic, uh, engagement. Everything from manipulation, which obviously. And control and things like planning academies start to get to that, try to hit into that. Uh, do we have any questions? But how am I doing on time, at time, Adam? Okay. Okay. Any questions either Chuck, if you could monitor the online chat?
Yeah. And there's no, there's no questions at this point. I am going to, uh, post the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation. I have two questions about that. I'm going to post it in a minute.
Any questions in the physical audience? All right. We'll keep going. Okay. So let's look at some Maryland statute. So the state of Maryland has the authority for planning and zoning. All right. I know that a lot of us think of planning and zoning at the local level, which is true, but officially the, the state of Maryland has planning and zoning authority and is delegated to the states, talking, it goes back to that, uh, standard zoning enabling act of nineteen twenty-two I was mentioning. It, it, it delegates this authority through enabling legislations that we're going to hear a lot about today. But some of the basics, it enables charter counties to enact local planning and zoning laws. It enables non-charter counties as well as Montgomery, Prince George's County in specific areas such as required and optional. And then former article twenty-eight created the unique entity of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for Montgomery, George's, where I can go into a lot of details about that, but you may come across this, uh, in your studies, your work in this area. Other planning related state legislation includes things like water and sewer planning, smart growth policies. You'll probably learn more tomorrow. We're switching to sustainable growth policies, storm waterman, conservation, wetland, endangered states, floodland. And on and on. Okay. So a new land use article was enacted into law during the twenty twelve general, uh, assembly session. Uh, it has a lot of spec- specific provisions, different counties, different areas, uh, one size doesn't fit all. If you were to look back at previous publications prior to twenty twelve, you would see things like articles twenty-eight and sixty-six B, uh, those are kind of transferred over into the land use article and some other articles, but, uh, that's a little bit of the, uh, background. Division one contains statewide enabling authority and planning requirements, um, concerning land use in commission counties, municipal corporations, Baltimore city. Division two contains provisions on the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and on land use in Montgomery and Prince George's County. We were not going to be quizzing you on this, but if you do, or you are interested in statute, start to dig into it, you'll start to see these. In twenty thirteen, the Maryland General Assembly repealed goals twenty-three, A, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, A, and replace them with the local government articles. So there's some, the land use article is going to contain a lot of the provisions, but there's some other ones in the local government article, some other ones, other places as well. Oh, I need to go on slide. So here I was talking about charter and code counties and non-charter counties. Uh, here's a map of them. So the green counties are charter or code counties. They have a slightly, they have a different form of, uh, or different council form of government and different comp plan requirements. The blue counties are non-charter counties. They have a commissioner form of government and different. Municipalities are going to have the same requirements for the most part. Or yeah, for the most part, they have the similar requirements as the blue non-charter counties. They have some distinctions, obviously because they're municipalities, um, different complaint requirements, annexation law and the like. Okay. So look at some US planning, uh, milestones, not a new concept. It goes all the way back to the earlier colonial day, colonial days. Plans also resulted in some great places such as Central Park. So, you know, I would talked earlier about some, uh, make no small plans, Daniel Burnham. You know, we have a different approach these days, oftentimes with planning. That doesn't mean some great things weren't created. Laws and law and legislation play a huge part, which Adam is going to dig into. Uh, Yuki is going to talk about Euclid and Amber Realty, which is one of the most famous Supreme Court cases related to planning and zoning in, in the country. And they, they created this, that planning and zoning are acceptable, acceptable use of the government's, what they call police powers. But I'm going to let Adam talk about that. Uh, here's just some of the famous, um, examples throughout the years. Let's look at some Maryland planning milestones. Maryland has been and still considerably planning, gets back to that, what I was talking earlier, real dense state. A lot of growth pressures, our location on sea, uh, eastern seaboard, close to DC. Uh, during the Great Depression, the Maryland General Assembly created the first state planning commission in the country, which coordinated public work, works programs coming out of the new deal. The state planning, which is eventually became MDP, was founded in nineteen ninety, nineteen fifty-nine in the land use act. Uh, the Economic Growth Resource Protection and Planning Act was enacted in nineteen ninety-two and established the state's growth policies and visions, which have grown since then. We'll talk more about them as well. In nineteen ninety-seven, we have the Smart Growth Act, uh, and established priority funding areas. You're probably familiar with priority funding areas. We'll talk about more of those as well. And then in twenty-ten, the Sustainable Communities Act passed, combined several different state, uh, revitalization funding programs, redevelopment into one umbrella program. Okay. Priority funding areas. Uh, these are designated areas where both the local, local and state government agree that they would like to see growth and capital invest, growth-related investment, um, investment. A PFA designation directs state infrastructure spending into these areas and the law restricts such spending outside of them. It helps preserve farmland, open space, the stuff we started with, uh, today and natural resources. But it also helps strengthen existing neighborhoods and places that can sustainably support or development. PFA does, there's a lot of confusion out there. A lot of people think that PFAs are a state designation. They're not. They start, they first identified local government and then reviewed by the state. Uh, so it's a good example of local and state government working together. There are criterias to meet PFAs, but they're still designated locally. The boundaries of incorporated municipalities as they existed of nineteen ninety-seven are, are, were automated as PFA as well as inside the beltways. But that doesn't, annexations don't automatically become PFAs. Uh, so that's another con, uh, common misconception. We're probably not going to delve into that, but if you have any questions, you can. So here's some of the criteria for priority funding areas. They need to have existing or pursue sooner service. If it's zoned for residential uses, it needs to have a density of three point five, a minimum density of three point five units per acre. It needs to have a growth plan consistent with projections. It needs to be in growth areas. Uh, and size of PFAs based on land needed for twenty years of growth. Um, if it's zoned, if it's not zoned for residential density, if it's zoned for employment uses, commercial, industrial, um, those also qualify. We'll talk more about PFAs later as well. Well, it's more than people still talking about them now. Uh, so present residential park parcels and acres by PFA. Uh, so you see here, um, by myself, yes. So the number of parcels developed in that timeframe, you can see there's so many more parcels that were developed inside of PFAs. But if you look at the actual development and acres, there's many more developed, many more acres developed outside of PFAs. That gets back to that density requirement, three point five drilling units per acre, you're going to have smaller parcels. So you have a lot more parcels developed in PFAs, but you're going to have bigger parcels developed outside of PFAs. All right. So, uh, see some of the. Have to, we all need to consider as planners in Maryland, about the state and local level, six hundred thousand new jobs by twenty forty. My colleague. Size of Seattle is going to be moving into the Maryland. How do we accommodate that? Um, and then movement of jobs outside of our urban communities contributes to the decline of established cities and towns. Uh, so the idea of PFAs, many of the sustainable communities programs is to encourage and promote this population growth in established communities, uh, areas that, so we can. They have the infrastructure available there, preserve our. But it also contributes to vibrant communities and, and growth in a sustainable manner. The more, uh, statistics about what has happened over the past decades. Not going to read them all to you. Not going to read them all to you, but I think we're all familiar with the image on the bottom right. Constantly striving for and it's very difficult is the reduction of vehicle miles traveled in the state. And it has a big land use component to it. All right, because when people, I think there's probably many people in here have very long commutes. You know, tell me, but that's something that planning aims to. You know, you want to put where people live and where they work. If not close together, at least accessible to one another and to reduce vehicle miles travels and you're never going to get rid of something like this completely, but something to work on. So we're going to do a quick review here. All right, true or false, Maryland is the fifth most densely populated state? I don't think I actually said the number, but it's true. I showed you, I showed you the comparison of size and density or population. All right, by twenty forty, Maryland is expected to grow by. Actually, all of the, well, I thought the answer. I think it, yeah. It's all the above.
All the above.
That's the trick with these questions. The answer is always all the above, so you know. Why do we plan? All the above. Where do Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority? All the above, so. Yes, the land use article. Priority funding areas, a little bit trickier. Not drawn by the state. We have a part in it. And they're making most efficient use of taxpayer dollars. So they're located inside growth areas. They're designated locally. The state concurs with.
For those online, I am having problems with the connection with them. So please be patient with us as I try to get us back to have the presentation. We see you again, Joe. We're waiting, we're trying to figure out the, of the sound. If you want to mute yourself, Joe, you're on mute.
Hey, sorry about that. There's just dealing with some wifi issues here. Hopefully that doesn't continue. Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear Adam?
Yes.
Okay, are you seeing the, are you seeing Euclid?
Yes, we are seeing the map. We lost you, we lost you right at the end of your presentation, Joe.
Oh, okay. Well, everything until now has just been introduction, talking about what we're going to be covering, covering land use, planning of law in Maryland's constitutional limitation.
We're, we lost you again. Please be patient. We will get the wifi. Apparently still problem on the at the conference. Just to let you know that I'm texting with Joe and they are working on trying to resolve the issue. And will be back with us momentarily. Again, apologize for the problem and guess the wifi in the conference area that they're at is not as stable. And so they are working on resolving that issue. We see you, or we have a new view, but that's, that's a positive sign that you're back with us. So we will.
We can't hear you in the room.
You cannot hear us anymore? Can you hear us?
Yeah, probably.
Your camera is cut out and the audience, which is fine right now, but just to let you know that it's not on the podium.
If you, his name's Rocky. He said he was leaving it too, but cannot be here.
Thirteen more minutes.
You hear us, Chuck? Can you give me a thumbs up if you hear me? In front of your face, give me a thumbs up. We can't hear you.
I can hear you. You can't hear me?
The audio, where's our microphone?
Are you?
Maybe it is line nine. I think that's right.
Chuck on mute?
No, I am not on mute.
Yeah, okay.
I can hear you.
Anything get unhooked here? Definitely on. Yeah, that's on.
Did I press ahead? Since Chuck's not, as long as it can hear.
We, yeah.
Go ahead, you go ahead. I'll try to fiddle with this. Let me redisplay this.
Oh, I don't know if you can do that, though. Can you fiddle with it while the screen is showing?
Maybe here, if I do it this way. Actually, I don't think I'm sharing the screen, so.
No, you know.
Yeah.
That's not working then.
I don't know if I can fiddle with it, but.
Maybe just, maybe just check the connection. Yeah, the physical stuff. All right. Chuck, can you hear me? Okay, I'm going to resume.
Yes.
We were talking about what the court held, which was that local jurisdictions can enact planning and ordinances, but importantly, the court didn't reach the important question of what happens when those zoning ordinances are applied to a specific property. It's just talking about planning and zoning, enacting planning and zoning legislation. We're talking about individual property. That's when Fifth Amendment comes in, the principal constitutional limitation on the planning and zoning authority. Okay, the Fifth Amendment has only twelve words and seven of them have generated probably thousands of decisions defining the line between private property and regulation in the public interest. Now, we're not going to be talking about what constitutes property or public use or just compensation, though all three are heavily litigated issues. Instead, we're going to focus on what constitutes a taking. Because that's what directly on the kind of work you. Okay, what is a taking? There's three forms of takings. There's eminent domain, regulatory takings, and certain types of exactions. Now eminent domain, you're familiar with. This is when the government comes and says, hey, we want your backyard to make a park, or we're going to put a roadway through it. The government declares its intent upfront. They have to pay for the property. And they get to build the road or make the park. That's probably not something that you all will be dealing with on a daily basis. It's more for the Department of Public Works. For you, it's going to be more about regulatory takings. Now regulatory takings, as the name suggests, is where the government doesn't physically take your property. They're not building a road in it, but they're regulating it to such a degree that they've effectively taken it. And you see this in like the park context. If the government tells you, you can't do anything with your property, they're essentially deming it to be a park to sit there in its natural form. So there's three ways of determining whether there's been a regulatory taking, and it's a difficult determination because all government regulation affects property values, you know, environmental regulation of coal reduces the value of that coal to the blue own those mineral rights. So you have to tease out what is just the normal effect of government regulation and where, when does it go too far? The Supreme Court has identified three ways of doing that. The first is the Penn Central takings rule, which is the default rule that applies in most cases. This, the Penn Central case involved Grand Central Station in Manhattan, where the owner of it wanted to build a large skyscraper on top of Grand Central Station, which was a historically protected building. The historic protection, protection division, commission denied the permit to build the, the high-rise and the owner sued. And the Supreme Court looked at three factors to determine, to tease out again, when is government regulation going too far? You look at the economic effect of the government action, is it depriving the property of all of its value? Reasonable expect, investment-backed expectations. Well, when you bought this property, did you buy it knowing that there that there would be these governmental restrictions that affect how you could use the property? Or are they being newly imposed so that you paid an awful lot for money or a lot of money for a property that is not worth so much now? And the character of the government action, is this, does it look like it's the government really trying to force you to turn your land into a park? Or is it more like just ordinary government regulation that's affecting the, um, the value of private property? Now, this kind of ad hoc multi-factor test is in any context of the law. Very difficult to predict how it'll come out in any particular case. There's no bright line rules. And so the Supreme Court, since announcing Penn Central, has been trying to identify circumstances where you can have some bright line rules. And the first of them is it's called physical takings. Uh, what the case that, uh, generated this one is Loretto versus Teleprompter Manhattan. And it involved a New York City ordinance that required all owners of apartment buildings to allow cable companies to install like a three foot by three foot box on the side of their building. With wires going up into it so that all apartment buildings in Manhattan could have access to cable. And the owner of one of those properties sued for a taking saying, hey, you're required, you're requiring me to accept a cable company's box on the side of my, uh, my building. And the apartment owner won. And it announced the principle here that if the government is allowing someone to physically occupy your property, even for just a three foot by. That is a taking. Now, the compensation may not be all that much, but it is a taking. So the government's not occupying that land, but they're allowing someone else to occupy that land. That will always constitute a taking. The next one is the Lucas style total taking. Case owes its, uh, it derives from a case involving Mr. Lucas who owned. On the coast of South Carolina and the, they enacted an ordinance that prohibited all development. C word of a certain, uh, an actual line in the sand. And Mr. Lucas owned property. C word of that line. So he could not develop his property at all. Now there were houses on both sides of his property that had been developed earlier before that line in the sand had been drawn. And it was drawn to try to protect, um, oceanfront dunes and, and of, of protect against hurricane damage and all that sorts of stuff. Some laudable, um, uh, goals behind the measure, but it deprived Mr. Lucas of, um, his ability to develop the property. And the Supreme Court ruled in his favor, thinking that if the ordinance deprives you of all economically viable use of your property, that constitutes a taking. Cause in that circumstance, you're pretty much telling someone, you've got to leave your property vacant. You gotta leave it a, 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 a park. Or in this instance, a beach. Now. The important thing is that the Lucas test, which every takings litigant tries to get into this box. It's really the test you need to be most mindful of. But it's focused on economically viable use. It's not so much focused on impact to property value. That's one of the factors that, you know, that's into the Penn Central test that I mentioned earlier. But to fit into this box, it has to be a deprivation of all economically viable use. There are cases out there that say that a deprivation of ninety-five percent of the value of your property is not enough. If you still do something with your property, make something of it, you're not going to fit into the Lucas box. You're gonna have to go to the Penn Central box and try to satisfy those three criteria in that case. The problem for plaintiffs is that if you find yourself in the Penn Central box, you almost always lose. Because those factors are flexible, they're malleable. It's easy for the government to say, well, no, this really isn't like a normal taking. And it's just the track record of takings litigants and the Penn Central test is, is not good. But if you can get into the Lucas box, you win. Now, because people want to get into this box, they try desperately to establish that they've been deprived of all economically viable use. And what you'll see often is that someone alone, a hundred acres of property, uh, twenty acres of it in the corner is wetlands. And then that, so they'll say, okay, I'm bringing a lawsuit saying you've deprived me of all economically viable use of that twenty acres of wetlands. Because you've denied me a wetlands permit. And the courts reject that type of splitting up the property. You have to look at the parcel as a whole. So in the circumstance I just gave you, a hundred acres, twenty acres of wetlands. Even if you've been deprived of all economically viable use of that twenty acres, you still can make a lot of your eighty acres that you, that aren't wetlands. And property value might be diminished a little bit, but it's not going to be an off. You're not going to be in the Lucas box. You're going to be in the Penn Central. Okay. Okay. Let's move on now to exactions. Now, which are another way that plaintiffs and land use takings can seek compensation for restrictions on the use of their property. As in an exaction, is it an affirmative condition placed on a permit or a special exception or something with respect to your property? And that. You know, it, it requires you to do something, maybe pay mitigation, maybe do something with another piece of property in order to offset the impacts of what you're doing on the property. Those can be unconstitutional. They have to satisfy two requirements. They have to have an essential nexus between the condition and the permitted activity. And the burden imposed by the condition must be roughly proportional to the harm caused by the permitted activity. Now, as with the taking stuff I just talked about, these all get traced back to, um, particular cases and you will hear them. Here this area of the law linked to these cases all the time. There'll be either Nolan or Dolan case. The Nolan Dolan rule you will hear. The first is the Nolan case, Nolan versus California Coastal Commission. And the Nolans applied for a permit to enlarge their house, the coastal commission, California Coastal Commission, citing concerns that a larger house would obstruct the public's view walking along the street of the ocean. They think it's gonna cut off the ability of the public to see the ocean. And we think that's a bad thing. And so they required as a condition of a permit to develop the land that the Nolan public cross an easement to cross their private beach along the ocean. Okay, what's wrong with this picture? The problem is the Supreme Court identified is allowing people to walk back and forth on your private beach does nothing to address the impact of a larger house on the public's view from the street and front of the property. They're completely different things. And so the court said, you can't do that. That's an unconstitutional condition. It's an exaction that is, um, that you can't do. I've lost my, here it is. So the rule, there must be an essential nexus between the exaction required for the permit approval and the legitimate government purpose to be served, be served by the, the exaction. That's not the case in the Nolan case. The next one is Dolan versus City of Tigar, uh, like that Nolan Dolan. You'll hear the Nolan Dolan rule, um, if you get into this area. Now here, the Dolans owned a hardware store, wanted to expand the hardware store. Um, and the, um, the government said, okay, you can do that if you install onsite mitigation for the stormwater impacts of enlarging your hardware store. And you have to give us another piece of property that you own so that we can turn that into a public greenway that will carry stormwater during flood events. Now, the court thought that there was some nexus there. They were troubled. But what they ruled on was saying that that's, you're going too far there. You've got stormwater impacts when you enlarge your, your, your business. That's a given. And the government can allow, can force you to internalize those costs, offset those costs that, you know, that additional development, uh, creates. But here they had onsite stormwater mitigation, which took care of that. Then they went further and said, and you gotta give us this property that you own elsewhere so that it can be part of a public greenway that'll also have stormwater impacts. The court just said, as a, as a, as a matter of magnitude, that's too much. You're going beyond offsetting the impact of this one development. That's the rough proportionality test. It doesn't have to be perfect, but there must be this rough proportionality between the impact of the development and the exaction that you're requiring as a condition of a permit. Now, uh, uh, an uncertain issue right now is whether the Nolan Dolan test requires, um, whether it applies only to permit conditions or whether it applies to things like legislatively imposed impact fees. You, you hear about this all the time where there's an ordinance that enact, that is enacted that says, you know, if you're putting in develop, you know, commercial development, you have to contribute X amount of money or, uh, to the road system, or you have to widen the roads in front of you. There, there's legislatively enacted, measures to ensure that development, the impacts of development are, are, are shouldered by the developer and not by the public. There was, um, a gentleman in the Sheets case who said that's unconstitutional because the government made no effort to determine whether the, um, street footage or frontage fee imposed on him really offset the impacts of his development. He was living a really small house on property that had some front, you know, some decent frontage along the road. But he was not going to be contributing meaningfully to traffic on that road. And nevertheless, he had to pay a fairly hefty twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, of, of an impact fee. And as it made it way, its way up through the courts, all of the courts were concluding Nolan Dolan test does not apply to legislatively imposed impact fees. It's only property specific permit fees. Supreme Court said, no, it applies to both. Taking the Fifth Amendment doesn't apply differently depending on whether it's a permit or whether it's a statute. It applies both. So immediately after this came out, there was a lot of worry about whether legislatally adequate public facilities ordinances or impact fee ordinances were now facially unconstitutional. The Supreme Court noted, this is where you get in the weeds of how Supreme Court cases are written. One of the justices said, hey, we're not saying that all legislatively imposed impact fees are unconstitutional. It could be that you could have, as long as you could show that the fee for say, commercial properties is roughly proportional to the overall impact of commercial properties. That's okay. Some justices said that, other justices, no, that's not okay. Jeeves case clearly left that issue open. And you're gonna see this issue litigated in the years ahead until it goes back up to the Supreme Court. They do this oftentimes. They'll flag an issue, let the lower courts fight it out, see if they develop, how they develop the law, and then they'll weigh in later on. But at the moment, legislatively imposed impact fees are not facially unconstitutional. Okay, that's a lot about the takings clause. I want to talk briefly about equal protection, which is, you find it in the fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Nor shall any state deny to any person within its jurisdiction, the equal protection of the laws. This is the provision that brought us Brown v. Board of Education in the nineteen fifties. Require, you know, struck down the segregation of public schools. The requirement that the government treat people, you know, similarly situated people, similar. Means it does not mean that it has to treat all people, all businesses, all landowners the same. You can require doctors to have more onerous continuing education requirements than say landscape architects because there's more at stake. Doctors who don't know what they're doing, people's lives can be lost. Um, so you can distinguish between people if you have a legitimate reason to. The government gets into trouble here when it, the, the different classifications on the basis of a sub, a suspect class like race, national origin, again, Brown v. Board of Education distinguishing on the basis of race. You can't do that. Or fundamental rights. If someone is expressing their First Amendment rights in a certain way, you can't discriminate against them on that basis. Now, by and large though, that's not going to affect what you do. Zoning and planning has lots and lots of discrimination going on. Because you're discriminating, you're, you're treating commercial properties differently than industrial, than residential. You're making those classifications all the time in the zoning context, but you're not doing it with suspect class. You're doing it for the legitimate rational reason that commercial, uh, properties have different impacts than residential properties. So you have to be aware of the, the fourteenth amendment, but by and large, we're gonna be, it's not going to be a meaningful restraint on your activities. All right. Let's move on and talk about planning and zoning in Maryland counties. Joe touched on this a little bit. Uh, the state has delegated planning and zoning authority to both counties and municipalities. As to counties, how and in which statutes the state delegates planning and zoning depends on what form of local governments your jurisdiction has adopted. Um, charter counties, code counties, you gotta look into the local government article. Uh, non-charter counties in division one of the land use article and Prince George's and Montgomery counties in division two. Now, these, these separations of these statutory provisions are not absolute. You can sometimes find provisions in one that, that addresses, um, you know, uh, you can find something in, in the land use article that relates to charter counties, but by and large, that's the overall structure. But before you configure all that, you gotta know what form of governance your, um, your jurisdiction has adopted. Joe had that very helpful map. This is if you're less of a visual learner, you want to see the, the list. Here it is. Now. The, the principal difference between charter home rule, well, let me talk a little about it. Charter home rule is when the jurisdiction has basically adopted its own constitution, its own, uh, county charter. Code home rules where they haven't adopted, a jurisdiction hasn't adopted a charter, but has availed itself of, uh, uh, a workaround that the General Assembly created in the nineteen sixties to allow for local jurisdictions to adopt home rule without going through the process of adopting a charter. Five counties have done that. And then there's the six commissioner counties that have not adopted any form of home rule. Now, adopting home rule, the principal significance of that is that it gives the local jurisdiction greater power and opportunity to legislate and regulate within its jurisdiction. And the flip side of that is that it limits the extent to which the general can enact local laws that affect that jurisdiction. Word about municipality. There are a hundred and fifty-seven incorporated municipalities in Maryland sprinkled throughout the state. Baltimore and Howard County do not have any, um, but they're everywhere else. Municipalities have no independent power unless they are incorporated, but all incorporated municipalities have charters and some form of municipal home rule. So the state has also delegated planning and zoning authority to municipalities. You can see the, the code provisions where that, uh, rests. Now, there's two caveats though, with respect to municipal planning and zoning authority. It, it applies only within the municipal boundaries themselves, including areas that are annexed. The municipality can't do planning and zoning of land that's outside of its border. And the municipal planning and zoning. And the municipal planning and zoning authority, if you're in PG County or Montgomery County, can't conflict with the MNC, PP, the Maryland National Capital Planning and whatever it is commissioned. Yeah. Or, or WSSC, which also has similar powers. All right. So now let's start talking about the nuts and bolts of planning. It all starts with the comprehensive plan. The local jurisdiction that it elects to exercise planning and zoning powers has to adopt a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the overall arching general vision of how development will unfold within the county. It's very general, not property specific. The comprehensive plan has to satisfy the state's 12 planning visions. Things like, uh, quality of life and sustainability, public participation, growth areas, economic development, et cetera. But at this stage of the planning zoning hierarchy, you're not affecting individual properties in a concrete way. That starts to happen at the comprehensive zoning stage. That's where you take this plan and you start to zone areas within the jurisdiction to implement that plan, to accomplish the goals and visions that you've planned for. This is like the, the adoption of a plan in the first place. The comprehensive zoning is a legislative act. It's done by the legislative body on the entire jurisdiction, or at least close to the entire jurisdiction, it has to cover a substantial area, it has to be product of careful study. Again, a lot of these rules are designed to give effect to the, the, the comprehensive plan. So you start with that, then the comprehensive zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Once you have your, your comprehensive zoning in place, then you start to get even more property specific through the enactment of zoning ordinances. Again, legislatively enacted, regulate density, building height and bulk. And it allows for uses by right and conditional uses. Now, uses by right, I think we're all familiar with that. If you've got an area that's zoned as residential, the zoning ordinance will allow for the development of residences within that residential area. That's, if it does, that's, uh, that's a use that's allowed by right. Conditional use is a little bit different. Conditional use. It's not a change in zoning, but it's, it's baked into the local zoning and in the zoning ordinances. It allows for a different type of use, say in a residential area, if you meet certain conditions. So a common example here is a dentist's office in a residential area. Because, you know, a dentist's office doesn't have radically different effects from a residential area, uh, development and people need to have this nearby. So they're often allowed by conditional use. The, the limitations on the conditional uses is that it must be, the, the allowed use has to be compatible, compatible with the neighborhood and further the comprehensive plan. And any adverse effect on the surrounding properties by that conditional use can't be unique or different. So this is the legislature saying, okay, if you meet these conditions, you can build a dentist's office in a, is in a residential area. The only way you can stop that, the only way that you can't build that dentist's office is if putting it on this particular parcel is going to have some weird adverse effect that would not be the case if it were put anywhere else in the jurisdiction. And the point of that again, is that the legislature has already determined in the, in the comprehensive zoning and the zoning ordinance, that it is going to allow this type of development under these different conditions. And so the only way you can, that you can stop something like that is if the legislature really hasn't made that call with, with respect to this particular development because its impacts are so weird if built on this particular property. All right. Another way that you can accommodate some variation within a, a, a particular owned district is floating zones. Again, legislatively established. It is a zoning classification for a specific purpose that is again compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but it's not assigned to a specific property. It's basically just says, within this residential area, there can be a grocery store within, with certain conditions. And then it's, um, later applied through a zoning and map amendment. So someone comes forward and says, okay, we want to build a grocery store over here on these parcels. And then you go amendment to allow for that grocery store. But again, it's something that the legislature has already approved in the comprehensive zoning and in the zoning ordinance. So, um, a lot of these restrictions are designed and to give effect to the plan and the legislatively adopted plan and zoning to get to, to allow that to be implemented and not to allow property specific exceptions to be made. Because as you can imagine, there's a lot of money at stake in, in how land gets developed. And if you start creating exceptions on a property, on a property specific basis, it creates this concern. Favoritism, people getting a, a better deal than their neighbors. So the whole desire is to try to make this uniform, try to make it consistent and tie it all into the comprehensive plan. So that leads us to some do's and don'ts. Spot zoning, you'll often hear it as a, as a, as a bad word. It occurs when small area in a zoning district is placed in a different zoning classification than the surrounding property. So you've got residential, but then there's one commercial area in the middle of that residential. Now, that, that sounds bad, but um, and it is illegal if it's inconsistent with the uses in the remainder of the district and done solely for the owner, the property owner's private interests. It is however, legal to do spot zoning if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and bears a substantial relationship to public health, safety, the kind of things that lie behind the plan. So again, uh, it's legal when, a good example is when there's a need for a service in the area for the convenience of the residents in the residential area. Grocery store, drugstores, barber shops, whatnot. As long as it is being done considered way, and it's not a backroom deal to, to, to benefit the property owner, it will be okay. Contract zoning is never okay. Contract zoning is when it's an agreement between a zoning authority and a property owner on how land is to be zoned. It's outside of the planning and zoning process, which has lots of procedural bells and whistles. It's a legislative process that the public is involved in. Contract zoning is two people in a back room saying, okay, we're going to let you develop your property as you, whatever they, they want to. And it's prohibited again, because it permits some special privilege, disrupts the comprehensive nature of the zoning plan and circumvents the formal exercise of local zoning powers by the legislative body. Peasmeal zoning is another way to provide for variation within a zone. It is a parcel specific change in zoning classification that occurs after the original or comprehensive zoning. It is a quasi judicial factual inquiry, so you're looking into the facts of a particular property. But the piecemeal zoning itself is accomplished through a legislative act. Now, it can only be based though, on a change or mistake. You'll hear the change mistake rule. It's one of the fundamental principles of Maryland planning zoning law. A mistake in this context means here that the legislative, legislative body's assumptions were wrong when it was doing the plan, doing the comprehensive zoning and enacting the zoning ordinance. They made a mistake and that happens. So you have to establish that mistake because again, we're trying to give effect to the legislative decisions that underlie planning and zoning. As for change, it has to be a substantial change within the surrounding neighborhood, not something miles away. And it can't be something that was before the legislative body when it adopted the zone. When they adopted the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive zoning, people knew that there was going to be a massive influx, influx of new workers to this portion of the jurisdiction and the legislative body said, yeah, but we're still, we're going to keep that at low density residential. They made that decision. You can't say, wow, there's been a, a real change, we've had change, we've had this massive influx of workers. That doesn't work because it was before the legislative body, they made this choice already. It's when they didn't, it's when no one foresaw that there would be this influx of, of workers. And then you can, you're on the right path to being able to establish the substantial change. So again, the change mistake rule is a restriction on property specific zoning. And it reflects the law's distaste for individual zoning decisions that may appear to be made only for the benefit of a single individual. And instead a preference for giving effect to the legislatively adopted plan, owning ordinance. Okay, let's talk a little bit about variances. Variances are also a way to allow for some flexibility at the property level. They are modifications to requirements about density, bulk, dimensional or area requirements, and they're granted to avoid a hardship that will result from literal enforcement of the restriction. But the hardship must be due to conditions peculiar these unique physical characteristics not shared by others in the area. And the hardship cannot have been caused by the applicant itself. And it must not confer some special privilege to others. Now, variances are a way to avoid takings case claims. If you've got through the way the zoning ordinance and setback requirements and whatnot apply to your property, it turns out you can't do anything with it, well, you're going to have a takings claim. So variance allows the local government to avoid that constitutional train wreck by, you know, uh, issue variance to allow some development to occur. So let's look at an example here. Client here, the proposed dwelling is the building on the right. And they want to build a house, uh, but under the zoning code, the house has to be a certain minimum distance from another structure. There's a barn on the neighboring property. And if you comply with that minimum distance requirement, you're into the side setback. So you can't comply with both based on how the zoning ordinance currently operates. It's not the, the, the landowner's fault that barn has been there. They've just, they just happen to have a lot that has really small dimensions. If that, that lot with that small dimensions is unique to that area, well, then they're going to be in a good position to get a variance. And so you get a variance from the side yard setback to allow that house to be constructed. If all of the other properties in this area in this zoning district are posted stamp properties like that one, it would be much more difficult for them to establish a variance. There was a recent case on this, uh, just in August of this year, a Maryland appellate court case that said it, the, the uniqueness, the, the hardship has to be due to the characteristics of the property. Not due to, well, you know, you, you're in a tough spot as a person or the way zoning laws apply more generally, you have to tie it to the unique conditions of your property. So if all the other properties in this, in this zoning area look like that small one, they're going to be, uh, hard pressed to justify a variance. Switch and talk about vesting. That occurs in Maryland when a property owner has followed existing applicable law and has obtained a permit or what have you, and has made changes on the property manifesting commencement of work such that the public is on notice. So you need those two things, you need a permit and you have to have done some work under it, under that permit that is publicly visible. Now, in this regard, Maryland is what's called a late vesting state. By contrast, early vesting states allow for formation of vested rights without having to show commencement work. If you just have a permit, that's enough. Others will allow for rights to vest even if you have any kind of site approval or property specific site approval, that would be enough in some jurisdictions. But Maryland, you need both the permit and the commencement of work. Now, that's important because once a right has vested, the property owner can move forward with the development, even if the, the local zoning ordinance changes in a way that would no longer allow for that development to occur. So it's a way to get your foot in under the door. And once your rights have been vested, they can, if they change the law, change the zoning ordinance, it's not going to affect your ability to develop it. And if the local jurisdiction still refuses to let you, you're going to be in a good position for a takings claim because you have this vested right to develop it. You've got a, a property that is now otherwise vacant. Okay, um, let's talk about boards of appeal. Boards of appeal are required for non-charter or commissioner counties and for municipalities, and they hear and decide appeals on, you know, when, when someone complains about how the local land use laws are being enforced or applied, conditional uses, special exceptions, those two terms, I should have said this earlier, are used interchangeable. They mean the same thing, special exception, no use, no difference. Applications for variances, those are set forth in state law. Commissioner counties, uh, non-home rule counties, that's the jurisdiction for boards of appeals. In charter and code counties, though, um, they're authorized, but they're not required. Jurisdiction establishes them by local law. They can establish somewhat broader jurisdiction than do boards of appeals and commissioner counties. So they can do things more than what I identified in the previous slide, they can do those same things, but they can also do administrative act, handle administrative actions on licenses and permits. Animal control, retirement issues, uh, basically the charter counties, counties with home rule can establish for themselves sort of jurisdiction the board of appeals will have. In terms of the procedure before the board of appeals, it's a lot like a court. Their, their meetings are, proceedings are publicly announced, subject to the open meetings act, they must be recorded. You have witness testimony under oath. And a variety of, of formal requirements like that. Continuing on, uh, in most cases, they have to deliberate and vote in open session. The record must reflect the vote of each member on any matter voted upon. And you have to have a written opinion that explains the board's reasoning and includes factual findings and legal conclusions. Again, awful lot like a court decision that comes out after litigation. Board proceedings are again quasi judicial like a court. Factual findings are given deference on appeal. The court is not bound by the board's conclusions of law or its application of the law to the facts, but the factual finds, the reviewing is bound by it. Then you, appeals are on the record, which means that you don't have new testimony before a reviewing court, no new evidence. Again, factual findings, the factual record is developed before the board of appeal. And then the decision based on that fact, those facts is what gets appealed. Courts, you know, you, if you've got a, a lawsuit in front of a judge and you see the judge in the grocery store, you can't come up to that judge and start talking to him or her about your case. That's, the rules don't allow that. And similarly, you can't have ex parte communications with board of appeals. you can't have ex parte communications with board of appeals members if you have, uh, a, a matter pending before the board. If that member doesn't have to recuse themselves automatically, they just have to disclose to all parties that this occurred and summarize the communication on the record. So it's really no longer ex parte. It's before the entire board. Let's move on to the ethics part of, hmm, the word ethics somehow didn't make it onto that. Oh, okay. All right. I had two empty slides. Yeah. Uh, so state ethics law prohibits improprieties, appearances of impropriety. No news here. Ensure fair dealings by officials holding positions of public trust. The state law you find in the general provisions article provides that counties and municipalities must enact provisions on conflicts of interest, financial disclosure and lobbying. Those provisions have to be similar to state ethics. The state ethics law, they don't have to be identical, though. You have local jurisdictions have some flexibility to tailor their ethical provisions, uh, to their specific context. Conflicts of interest, uh, officials, employees may not hold outside employment that would impair their impartiality or independence of judgment. Uh, an example here is, uh, a forester in DNR's forest service couldn't, could not serve as a member of local planning commission because the commission had duties relating to site plan approval and forestry management activities that were regulated by DNR. Two masters thing. He was doing forestry work for DNR. He can't do forestry work for the local government. You can't use the prestige of your office for private gain. Now, I know that might sound goofy that, you know, you're, this is really such a prestigious office. Um, but you, you can't show up at a, a permit seating for neighbor and testify in favor of it and say, I am a member of the planning commission and I think this permit should be issued. You can't do that. You can't throw official weight around in that way. You can't use confidential information acquired in official, in your official capacity for your own benefit or another, that seems fairly, um, common sense. And you can't participate in the matter in which, in which you or certain relatives have a legal or economic interest. That's a little more complicated. Um, so, uh, it, uh, it, uh, so you can't hold an interest in a business that contracts with or is regulated by your agency. You can't be employed by a business that contracts or is regulated with, uh, by your agency. Um, and you can't represent any party for a contingent fee before any local body. And significantly, this applies to you and qualifying relatives, which include spouse, parent, child or sibling. Now, subject to limited exceptions, you can't solicit or accept gifts of more than nominal value. Currently, that's at $20 from any person who is regulated by or does or seeks to do business with the official's agency. And after you leave government service, you can't act as the paid representative of another in connection with a matter in which you significantly or participated significantly in how you were working for the jurisdiction. Now, participated significantly doesn't mean that you have to have been the decision maker in that matter. It is enough that you were, um, involved in how, um, you know, the specific application of the program to a specific property. Um, if you were just tangentially involved, talking about the development of the program generally, that's okay. It's when you are involved in how the agency applies those rules to a specific property. And in the middle of that, you leave government service, you can't represent the private homeowner or landowner in that same proceeding. So when is it appropriate or necessary to recuse yourself? For example, a planning commissioner's spouse has a development project that is coming to the commission for a site plan approval. So this is a business that is being regulated by your agency. And because those commercial interest rules apply to qualifying relatives, your spouse captures you. So, um, in that circumstance, you have to recuse yourself. You cannot participate in any part of the matter. Disclosure without recusal is insufficient. So when we were talking about the board of appeals and the ex parte communication, there it's just disclosure. In this context, if you have the conflict of interest, you have to recuse yourself. Now, if you have questions on ethics, you gotta contact the state ethics commission. They are the experts. Um, if you have counsel, they, they might be able to through that as well, but, um, I know we are not allowed to, um, provide the provision because the state ethics commission has that power, uh, by statute. And so if you wanna, if you find yourself in a sticky, uh, situation, call the ethics commission. They handle specific questions all the time. You don't have to worry about, uh, am I telling the police about something that I've done wrong? They will, they'll help you, uh, walk through it. Okay, quick check on learning. Do we have time for that or should I stop? Okay. Okay, development rights. Do not vest until construction is complete? No. The applicant obtains government approval on a preliminary plan? No, that's the way it would be in an early vesting state, but not in Maryland. Applicant has a building permit and has made visible changes to the property thereby giving notice to the public. Exactly. That's correct. Public notice is printed in a local newspaper. No, it's not required. There's a notice component here that's built into the law, but there's no requirement that public notice be printed in a local newspaper. All right. A regulatory taking occurs when your lawyer says so. Now, that's not a bad answer because most cases are covered by this Penn Central test, which is really difficult to figure out whether you've got a taking. There's no easy answers, uh, there, but no, not the right answer. Regulatory taking occurs when a use is not permitted under current rules. Well, that's part of it, but just because a use is not permitted, it has to be all economically viable uses where you get into the Lucas box. So a regulation removes all economic value in the property. If it's truly all economic value, yes, that will be a taking. 95% is not going to be enough, but if it's 100% and you can't do anything with it, you're going to fit into that Lu- Lucas box. When it is determined that a variance is needed? Well, no, a variance can be a way of avoiding a taking, but because a variance is needed, it doesn't necessarily mean that a taking would occur if no variance was provided. An unconstitutional exaction occurs when the exaction has nothing to do with the governmental purpose for the exaction. Yes, that's the essential nexus. You have to have the connection between the exaction and the governmental, um, and the um, impact of the, uh, exaction. The impact of the exaction far exceeds the governmental purpose for the exaction. That's two, that's the rough proportionality, um, portion of the, uh, exaction, the Dolan rule. There is both an essential nexus and rough proportionality between the exaction and the governmental purpose for the exaction. That's when you've, when the government has satisfied the rule. There's no taking in that context. All right, a hearing before a board of public, uh, public, uh, board of appeals must be recorded? Yep. Held in the evening? No, often are, but doesn't have to be. Have testimony taken under oath? Yep, just like a court, court. Include the recorded vote or failure to vote of each member? Yep. Counties and municipalities must enact public official ethics rules for which are the following. This is Joe's all of above. Um, rule, if you see that on there, it's always the case. Um, yes, all four of them. Ex parte communications from a party to a board of appeals member should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision making? No. Always require recusal of the board of appeals member? No, we talked about that. Must be disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record? Yes. Should be kept confidential under one or more executive privileges? No. Privileges sometimes apply, but not in this context. And that's it. So, uh, does anyone have questions now? We have a few minutes before we move on to the next section. All right. Have we heard from the online people or are we just?
All right. There are no questions online. Uh, if you can hear me.
Chuck, why don't you try to give it another test to see if we can hear you?
Uh, there were no questions. Can you hear me?
That's not a good sign. All right, give me a second. There's.
Test.
I think we're still live because we're seeing.
You testing there? I'm testing. Are you hear me?
Test it again, Chuck.
Test, can you hear me?
I don't know what's going on. Let me look one time. I mean, I'm teaching the next section, but.
Testing, you hear us?
Not as well as Chuck. Um, I don't, there's something's going on with the mouse too. I can't even see it. See here. Nope. Yeah, it rains a pool, sure. Where did the mouse go? Let me stop sharing for a second. No, so there we go. All right. And I'll look at the audio real quick. It's not, I mean, Speaker's Real Tech is the audio for the, um, computer. Lines. All right, I'll try.
Do you need to plug in?
We got it. I thought it was.
Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Cool.
Yay.
All right, so let's get back to my, let's get back to. So I guess it just switched. All right, so this thing can't get perfectly out of the way. I tried to move it, but and it's like, we are fixed that. We are on time, which is surprising, especially given the fact that we had such technical issues. And it appears that, uh, the wifi is holding up or whatever. Maybe, maybe this is connected. All right, we also have a hotspot that I set up in case we need to use that. That's kinda, it's not a bad, all right. We are going to talk about the comprehensive plan now. Thank you. Oops. Okay, um, who in here? Uh, I'll, I'll repeat to the, to the audience, the virtual audience, who in here has worked on a comprehensive plan as a planning commissioner? Okay, it's like most of the audience. All right, all right. How, how did, how did it go? All right, one groan. That's not uncommon. Okay, all right. Well, those of you who haven't, uh, you definitely will. Um, because that's one of the key things has been mentioned a couple of times. One of the key roles of planning commissioners, uh, in really the country, but in Maryland, um, it's definitely codified. Um, so, uh, to get back to one of the, you know, the original purposes of, of planning, you know, comp plans and plan in general protect the health. I started talking about resource conservation. That's continues to be a, a major, um, goal, objective of comprehensive planning, uh, to develop a functioning built environment. Predictability and transparency are very important. People want to know where they can expect what is going to be preserved, where the, where the jurisdiction is going to grow, um, what they can do with their property, what their, what can be done with properties close by. And then as always, public participation is essential throughout the process. Comprehensive plan and, and just planning in general. Okay, uh, so the process is outlined in the, uh, Maryland land use article. It is the duty of the, um, prepare and shepherd the comprehensive plan. Now, in, in many jurisdictions, uh, planning staff or even working with a, a consultant um, will actually be writing the plan and doing a lot of the analysis, but the, the planning commission is always there to help move through the process, engage with staff. So. Um, so, no, I'll get back to that. Uh, so you know, they, you, the planning commission was engaged with elected. Engage with property owners, engage with, uh, uh, businesses, employers. And comprehensive plans are very important for later decision making. Now Danny's taking pictures, so right. Uh, so, you know, the, there's, it's, the comprehensive plan is meant to be guided, so like, if you say a difficult or just, uh, yeah, a difficult development decision or other decision, funding decision comes up, you know, where do you look uh, to get information on how that decision should be made? What is our, what does our community decide it? The comprehensive plan, and that's not going to have the answer to every question, but it will provide guidance there. And public participation is vital because, uh, it's just good governments, governance, it gets buy-in from the community. Uh, and it enhances your knowledge. Or you can't, nobody can know everything about their community, uh, the resources that are there, the vulnerabilities are there, and public participation is the only way to, to really find that out. Um, okay, so the 12 visions before. Uh, yeah, there were seven original visions established by the 1992 Economic Resource Planning Act. Later, at the Maryland Department of Planning. I encourage you to attend that session if you want to learn more, uh, about where we're considering to go with those. Um, so a lot of these, you know, things, everything from housing to implementation. Um, these are all, all things that would be included in the comprehensive plan in some form or the other. Now, these don't align with the about elements. So you might have seen both the planning vision, elements. Uh, but these are required for all comprehensive plans to advance these by the land use article. These are um, and, but they're also, while a comprehensive plan must advance them at the local level, these are also the state's visions. So state agencies, uh, have to, were, were held to this requirement as well. All right, um, so. Okay, yeah, all right. Um, so comprehensive plan, though, while you have the state visions, comprehensive plans usually do start with their own community's vision, right? What's specific to your community? What's, what's the context uh, where you find yourself? Uh, they should look at the community evolution conditions and trends over time. It's not only a forward looking uh, document because to know where you want to go forward, you have to look back as well. So oftentimes comprehensive plans will look like, you know, have we been growing? Uh, what is, what is our job makeup? Um, what is the step? Uh, things like that are, um, in environmental preservation, resources, how, how are we doing? Uh, you, you have to have that analysis as a foundation. Uh, but then they also establish goals, objectives and policies to realize the plan. As a vision, people consider these differently, but I often consider goals as being like, this is the end state or, or state of being. Uh, objectives are things you can measure. Okay, towards getting there and then, uh, policies. Right, um, so, you know, it's gotta be inventory, it'd be demographic. Still. Networks, your paper, land use, it's sensitive area. You want to. You mentioned, what is your rest? Right? What are your green and water infrastructure needs? Have the water and sewer capacity and I consider things, uh, you want to consider implementation strategies? What are some incentives to attract the kind of business? Or even housing you want? In need, there's our current zoning, meet the objectives. We maybe have to do a comprehensive rezoning that which admin. Uh, what funding do we need to develop? Who can we partner with? Again, it could be local, uh, employers, it could be institutions of higher could be jurisdictions. And then you need comprehensive Maryland departments or that you would at least review your comprehensive plan every 10 years to see if it needs to be changed. Doesn't mean you have to change it every 10 years. But you shouldn't only be opening But you shouldn't only be opening your comp plan every 10 years, right? What, how is it going to that? Things are going to change. Maybe you have a new, maybe something really great happens. You have a new employer coming in, you know, and you, you have to have that feedback. You have to have that way. Consider it's like, how's it, how's it doing? There's a also in the land use article saying that you need to submit, develop a report every five years. How we do things change? Um, and you can always amend your comprehensive plan as well. All right, so there are certain requirements. So we talked visions earlier. Visions are the big picture. All right, where elements gets a little bit more into the details. So Maryland statute requires certain elements for comprehensive plans. They change though, based on if it's a charter status or your charter county or a non-charter, non-charter county municipality. Earlier, non-charter counties municipalities have a lot of the same requirements when it comes to comprehensive plans. Charter counties differ. So, uh, just a few examples here, having a goals, policies and vision. There's a transportation element. Water resources element. So this is includes drinking water. It also includes wastewater for municipalities. You have the municipal growth element. This would facilitate annexations, um, and other forms of growth, growth, and that's specific to a municipality. A county doesn't need to have a municipal growth element. Sensitive areas. We've talked a lot about the areas you want to preserve, protect. What are sensitive environmental features or others? And then there's some that are optional. Or kind of if then, one is the mineral resources element. If new, if current geologic information isn't, uh, available. You need to have a mineral resources element. This usually related to mining or quarrying. Um, so that's required as well. Um, some other ones here, land use, community facilities, things like schools, uh, parks, community, uh, recreation centers. Fisheries is another if then, if you are a county on a, um, a non-charter county on, uh, tidal waters, you need to have a fisheries element. Um, areas of critical state concern, things like development regulations, implementation, how are you going to make this work? And then the newest one is the housing element. This, the permitted. Fire to. But then in the 2019 general assembly session, they added a housing element, uh, to all the plans to address affordability. Add air housing. Uh, comprehensive plan. It's about the housing element because it's the newest one. I don't want anybody to think that comprehensive plans in Maryland didn't address housing prior to the housing element. They did. These things are going to be incorporated into, uh, other elements that are required. What the land use article does say, these are some other permitted elements. In reality, I mean, if you wanted to include something in your comprehensive plan, there's nothing preventing you from doing that. Right? This is a comprehensive plan. It's not like, whoa, well, this certain element we want to address is not permitted. I guess we can't plan for it. Uh, but this is more like giving you of ideas of other things that you could plan for. If I kick that, exactly. All right. All right, so planning, um, is not easy. Let me catch up here on my notes. And I, we heard a groan earlier. Uh, it's definitely one person in the room and I'm sure some people, uh, joining virtually would know, know that's the case. Uh, there are definitely different viewpoints that you have to consider. Uh, you know, the interest of property rights versus the desire to preserve rural land in a community. You're going to have people that are going to come out strongly in favor of both, or maybe somewhere in between. Uh, there's the need for more housing in a community, but also perhaps a concern that you don't have the facilities, um, to accommodate that housing. You know, those, there's no easy answers to these. It's a slow deliberative process that takes a lot of work, both internally and with stakeholders and part of public participation. Um, should engage local staff, create advisory groups of experts, uh, people that, you know, have different focus areas. Um, you can maybe able to hire advisors. I know a lot, uh, are consultants. It's not. Uh, every. Your district jurisdictions and what you, the capacity. Now. Um, capacity differential differentiation. Um, so yeah, it should involve residents, landowners, business people, employers in your community. Add the community groups, you know, maybe stations, maybe there's, uh, uh, a housing organization in your community, environmental groups, um, commerce group, you know, you really have to engage a lot of different viewpoints. And then government agencies. There, there's also what I call in reach, you know, outreach is going outside of the government, but comprehensive planning and plan in general involves. Reach, right? You, you have a planning department. To your public works department. You should be talking to your parks department, uh, because they, the comprehensive work as well. Uh, it's not anything, it's just a, any. Function. Um, so, uh, you could have comprehensive plan work sessions. See, uh, with for a planning commission to engage in, uh, often over here you see a SWAT analysis. Has anybody done a SWAT analysis here before? Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, uh, something that could be done in a work session. You could, work sessions are what they, what it sounds like works really a chance for the staff and the planning commission to take some of the issues. You could look at one element at a time. You could look at certain components of your comprehensive plan at a time. So the existing conditions, where are we now? Uh, what information have we gathered? Have there any background studies? Sometimes they'll do market studies, housing studies, uh, other infrastructure studies. Uh, those could be presented at a work session and discussed. What are the big issues we're facing? Now, um, public input, right? So say your jurisdiction does a survey or does community meetings or does some other form of, uh, public input gathering. Now that could be summarized, analyzed and presented at a work session where the, the, um, the, the planning commission would address it. And then there's always reviewing plan drafts. You go through the process. Uh, this could, uh, you know, ideally it'd be incremental and you'd have different components as you go along. Review feedback turned into process. I mean, I wouldn't recommend any planning, staff, planning departments, 300 page comprehensive plan, drop it on the planning. They're like, give us your feedback. Uh, that may have had, sure that's happened to some, but the idea would be, you know, your review different component to go along. Um, so comprehensive plans, just like you need, think outside of planning department or planning commission to plan, they outside of the plan itself. Uh, there's a, there's parts of the land use article that describe what consistency with the comprehensive plan means. Right? So that applies to many of the, all these. So municipal growth, municipal growth, obviously, I often think about it as annexations. Annexations need to be consistent with the municipal growth element, meaning the municipal growth element of your comprehensive plan. That a certain property that you're considering for annexation could be annexed. Right? Transparency aspect. People should know that this may be annexed. It doesn't, just because you put a property in your municipal growth element, doesn't mean you have to annex it over the planning horizon of that comprehensive plan, but it should be indicated in there as potential. This could be a map. It could be a list of properties. Uh, it could be some form of analysis that lets the readers of your comp plan know that you might annex a property. School planning, uh, educational facility master plans are supposed to be consistent with comprehensive plan. Uh, water resource planning. All right, so water and sewer plans are controlled by counties in Maryland, but they, there's a requirement in the environmental article that your water and sewer system with the comp plans. So you, you putting in your complaint, these are the kind of areas we want to serve with public water and sewer and when. So when that water and sewer plan comes in, it's being amended by the county. And it's proposing to serve a property or plan a property to be served. That should be reflected in the comprehensive plan. Or smart. That plans align, so they all make sense. They all kind of tell the same story and they're all working together. They are inconsistent with each other and people aren't talking and it can be different, but the idea they, they work together. Transportation. The Maryland Department of Transportation for a summer, they're, right now they're doing. Listen as well, you know, your major transportation projects that you're requesting that M dot fund. It's capital programs. That should be reflected in your comprehensive. Inter-jurisdictional coordination. Right? Many, many aspects of planning, most, I guess, almost like outside of a jurisdictional boundary, right? Like water flows between jurisdictions, uh, as do roads, uh, as do, you know, housing people. You know, they often decide where to live, where they can afford it. Um, and it's, you know, the person who lives just outside. The municipality, so they need to, they need to coordinate. There's linkages, yeah, land use policy, technical assistance, regulatory permitting, um, uh, funding, all these things should be considered as part of the comprehensive planning process. A municipality who's planning doing a comprehensive plan should early reach. By essential part of planning because, you know, you get far down the road of dumping and then towards the end, the county, it's a big reason why they can't, they don't want that to happen. Be much better that you've discovered that early on in the process. So make sure you're engaging your, um, neighboring jurisdictions late and early. Um, so then you get to the reviewing, your, the later parts is part of the, the comprehensive plan process. So the draft is by the mission. Sixty day public. Charter packs for now, they have slightly. Where it has the. You know, under the legislative body, you need to send it to the Maryland Department of Planning. Jurisdictions as well. So there's a 60 day review period. Uh, Maryland Department of Planning will send out the draft. Other agencies, Department of Natural Resources, Maryland Department of Environment, Housing Community Development. On the list. Comments, and we compile them and send them to you. It's important to know, a lot of people think that like Maryland Department of Planning signs off on comprehensive plans. We don't. There's a statute or the, uh, land use article gives us the authority to provide comments and feedback that you need then to include in the public record for. And due of things that this is required. About this internally. We don't have any control. You have to change this. You have to. Our planning, we just remind you, um, and then you can. That, that, that public hearing, it won't, they'll, they'll realize from the public, there's a lot of things we still need to work on. It might do. Add another formal requirement for you to send it back to us. After, uh, it is, after a planning commission recommends it for approval of some version. That was up to the legislative body, be it a local council, uh, board of commissioners. They have to have their own public hearing and they may modify the plan or they may send it back to you to the planning commission. They do have that authority. Uh, I talked earlier about the five year report. So five years after the adoption of a comprehensive plan, you're required to, uh, compile and submit an implementation report. What you've done. What is working with? Good, and it, a lot, it's, it might sound like, oh, here's one more thing we have to do. Like I said, like you really need to uh, ever look at it again. It's really, it's a good milestone. How are we doing? Does this need any changes? The Maryland Department of Planning has created a template for the five year report. We can share with you. It's on our local government annual reporting tools, uh, that makes it easier. And then you're required to review every 10 year. Six, it was changed to, to 10. Part, it does not mean that you have to update your plan every 10 years. A lot of jurisdictions do. Reason they change was to align with the decennial census data. Could definitely. Here a small town, slow growth or no growth. And 10 years, say eight years, nine years, you're looking at your comprehensive plan that you adopted that many years ago. Now, you know, a lot of this stuff is really, really good, you know, which still, you know, this still applies. Uh, you can move forward with that plan, but what is required is the review. The one caveat I'll add is if new requirements have been added by the general assembly to comprehensive plans in that 10 years, you do need to address those. So for example, the housing element was added in 2020. So say there was a, a jurisdiction that adopted a new comp plan in 2012. It didn't have a housing element, or if it did, that housing element didn't meet the requirements of the law that went into effect that added to the land use. You would have. Keep everything else the same in that plan? You're planning, you have to determine that it's still applied. You say, we're going to the house. Requirement, and a lot of jurisdictions did that. A lot of people are falsely believe that you updated every 10 years. No, it's, it's a review. Um, we do, uh, provide lots of technical assistance. We're not the only ones. We encourage jurisdictions to reach out to the Maryland Department of Planning early in the planning process. Uh, we can point you to resources. We can point out things that have changed, like housing element. See, um, when it switched from six years to 10 years, we created this guidance document.
Hey Joe, just to let you know, we can't hear you anymore.
Long ago did that go off, Chuck?
Uh, just about a minute or two, but now, now I can hear you again.
Okay. Sorry about that. I wonder if there's, it's not running out. Blinking green. Um, I'm going to get rock over here in the batteries. Uh, any questions about, are there any questions Chuck online about comprehensive plans?
Uh, hold on here. Uh, can we post the, uh, the, could we post the link to the five year report and the conference? I'll be glad to add that. And then there was two that about, uh, one that said about lost sound again. Uh, it's now working. So you've been in and out. So I don't know if you've been moving around a little bit that's caused that, but, uh, just FYI, um, I will post the, the link to the, uh, the five year, uh, implementation report.
All right, I just changed my batteries and my microphone set, so hopefully. It's not blinking anymore. I don't know what, how this went on there, but. Whatever. I'll do that. Any questions in the room? About comprehensive plans, we can pass the microphone to you. We got one for there. Sorry, you gotta go to the very other corner of the room, Adam.
I'm not even a planning commissioner, so maybe.
I don't know if it's, sorry, there was a button. All right.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I, I actually have that pretty low because it's mostly for the, the virtual audience to hear you, so.
Um, so I was just saying, I'm not actually a planning commissioner, so maybe I shouldn't be asking a question, but you mentioned that there were other resources for the planning. Um, so I was just saying, I'm not actually a planning commissioner, so maybe I shouldn't be asking a question, but you mentioned that there were other resources for the planning commission. So starting to approach these comp plans. So beyond, uh, Department of Planning, are there others that you have brought in to, to help?
Well, yeah, I, we've, in the past, we've convened different agencies to, uh, meet with jurisdictions early in the planning process. I mean, we can also, and there, there's also a ton of resources available through state agencies, institutions of higher learning, like National Center. That may not be labeled as a comp plan resource, but we can point you to various mapping tools, everything from historic resources to environmental resources to guidance on critical areas, which was mentioned earlier. To guidance on resources, like what are resources available or data, even like we, the Maryland Department of Planning and other agencies have information on data, you know, what are the growth industries by region? If you're looking at labor statistics. They, they may not be labeled as comp plans, but if, if you, if you, uh, or for comp plans, but they could definitely be used for that. Yeah, I mean, there's a ton, there's a, we recently partnered with the MDE. It's on our website, but it's a dual group, uh, work on updating the water resources element guidance in 2022, uh, to better address potential impacts of climate change and resiliency. And then like National Center for Smart Growth and other institutions of higher learning have a lot of resources, studies that are available. Uh, Department of Housing Community Development is a vital partner to us as well. Um, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of good information out there and we can help point you to it. Any other questions? All right, uh, I have another section. We're going to look at specifically some other planning commission roles and responsibilities. Let me catch up on my notes, even though I'm not using them as much. Okay, so you are not alone, right? I know planning commission, sometimes it can feel like that in the middle of a public hearing when everybody's yelling at you, uh, but that's not. Uh, hopefully that's not the case. Uh, so you obviously are the planning commission. You have the administration of your jurisdiction. Planning professionals. I know not all municipalities, some of the smaller ones have full time planning staff. I understand that. Uh, but you know, we, you're always available to reach out to MDP and others as well. Uh, legislators at the state level, Maryland Department of Planning, uh, your Board of Appeals. If you have, or you're, you're going to have a Board of Appeals and then Maryland court system. Adam would probably know more about that than me, but, um, they're kind of, they're always available to help. State ethics, like you mentioned earlier, and the court system. I, I'm, I'm not as familiar with how the court system works closely with planning commissioners, but. Well, the, the ones towards the top, uh, are, are probably your, your strongest partners. Um, so planning commissions, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, formal and informal roles is determined by local jurisdictions. I'm not going to be able to answer all of your roles and responsibilities here because it differs by different jurisdictions. And these can be through provisions in their codes, charters, bylaws, general practices. So I always encourage you, if you're really wondering how, how does this work in my jurisdiction? Talk with your attorney's office. I mean, you can start with staff, but talk to your attorney's office, uh, because they'll know the specifics of your, uh, requirements. And, and oftentimes people will ask us like, are we required to do this? Are we required to do that? And sometimes you can say yes, you know, or no, based on what the land use articles say, but sometimes the answer is well, yes, you're required to do it if your own rules say you're required to do it, right? So you need to go look at your own rules, like you, you wouldn't, if you didn't establish that requirement, yeah, you maybe, but if you did establish that requirement, you gotta live by it. Um, so make sure you check with your attorney's office. And so, yeah. Comprehensive plan. And creating and applying maps and regulations to implement the comprehensive plan, things like zoning subdivision and development, uh, requirements, things we've also mentioned. We talked a lot about the comprehensive plan. Probably, uh, let's see if there's anything new here that I didn't talk about here. Um, so planning commissions, again, have different roles depending on whether they are established by charter or not. I'm not going to focus as much on charter counties because as Adam mentioned, they have their own constitutions, equivalent of a constitution, and that's where you're going to find your answers to a lot of these, uh, responsibilities or to look at the charter. But for a non-charter counties and municipalities, planning commissions typically play an advisory role in relation to zoning ordinance changes, be it comprehensive zoning or otherwise, changes to subdivision and development regulations. Um, some development proposals such as planned unit, uh, developments or PUDs. Uh, they may have a role in capital budgeting and budgeting and programming. And other implementation growth management tools. Things could like land preservation, annexation, development rights and responsibilities. Because it's mostly going to be an advisory role where you're providing suggestions or recommendations to the legislative body. But these are all the different areas that you could, you could play a role. There are some areas that planning commissions have approval authority. These areas include approval over the use of public lands, such as those for public streets, parks and other purposes. This is done through their authority to review and approve subdivisions and site plans. Uh, they may have the, or you have the authority to review and prove some types of developments such as minor subdivisions. These could be delegated by non-charter counties and municipalities, even to a delegation could be to an administrative process. Um, where it's more. Yeah, it's less, uh, you know, administrative, more like a workflow, uh, and less as much of a, a public hearing type process. Um, yeah, again, local rules, always look at your local rules. That's where you're going to find the answers to a lot of what I can and can't do. Um, in some charter counties, authority for approval of rezonings, special exceptions and variances is given to an administrative hearing officer. While other provisions such as the review and recommendation on the capital improvement program is given to a planning advisory board. But again, you need to look at your charter if you are in a charter county. Uh, we talked a little bit about work sessions earlier. I'll go and say some more. They're like with comprehensive plans, if a, a planning commission wants to get more detail on something, uh, work really closely with staff, they'll go into, they'll have a work session. Um, while work sessions are open to the public, they normally, their public testimony is not taken. That's for the public hearing. Um, so the public will be there, uh, but this is really meant to be a working session between planning commission, staff, anybody else who's, uh, invited. Um, it is important that public hearings of the planning commission be conducted in a fair and consistent manner. Adam mentioned this as well. Uh, from meeting to meeting, the public should see that there's, they have, should have regular expectations, understand how it works and that these rules are being followed and that there is time for opportunity for public input. Maybe it's not during the work session, but they know and can understand and can anticipate when it will, um, be permitted. Uh, the MPCA, who is partnering with, or part of this, this conference did, uh, has, uh, abundance of examples of rules and procedures for BZAs and for planning commissions, if you're interested in one of different sized jurisdictions as well. Uh, so plans reviews, all right, when, it's important to note that it's very important for planning commissioners to understand Board of Appeals members to review and understanding documents being presented at the public meetings, hearings and work sessions. Could be site plans or other documents. Uh, you, you can't get around the fact that planning commission, being on a planning commission involves homework. Uh, it just does. It's, uh, you know, it's a staff responsibility to make that homework as get that to you in a timely fashion and for it to make sense and to answer questions. But a planning commission does involve that, uh, and it's important to be prepared. Um, jurisdiction should provide an overview of the type of material being transmitted and how to best use it. Again, site plans such as we see here, plot plans, staff reports, special studies, things like transportation studies, traffic studies, environmental studies. Site plans such as the one illustrated here typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities, landscaping buildings, as well as the tabulation of specific site data that you'll see in the bottom right. Um, so it's important to do your homework, uh, but it's also, again, it's important for staff. If staff's sending you a one hundred page agenda packet the day before your agenda, um, you should ask them to not do that and give it to you earlier than that. Uh, that's only reasonable. Um, so the septic's law rule, uh, does, there's specific things for the, the planning commission. Uh, the septic's rule went into effect in, in 2012 and local jurisdictions required to identify areas or tiers. Uh, it can get confusing sometimes because sometimes the forward tier is used for things not related to the septic's law. Uh, but it's specifically used for this. Um, and this is where new subdivisions will be served, uh, on by, um, public sewer systems or onsite septic systems. It's really focused on the septic systems. These are based on land use pla- plans, the zoning, the water and sewer plans and adopted agricultural plans and policies for areas you want to preserve. So the process for initial adoption of tier maps was flexible. It's, you know, it's now over ten years old. There are so, there are, uh, complicated ways to update them and incorporate them to your comprehensive plan, which I'm not going to go into here. But the, uh, in the early phases of, uh, uh, adopting, reviewing and considering uh, tier maps, the planning and border commission may have been involved in that process. But now, once they've been established and they're in place, the planning board or planning commission has a role when, when it comes to reviewing major subdivisions in tier three areas. So the, the four tiers, tier one is served by public sewer. This only affects sewer two, not water, not public water. Tier one is served by public sewer. Tier two is planned to be served by public sewer. Tier, I'm gonna skip over three for a second. Tier four is no major subdivisions on septic and then tier three does allow major subdivisions on septic. Um, so any major subdivision in a tier three area must be reviewed through a public hearing by the planning board of commission. Has anybody reviewed, um, major subdivisions and tier three areas? Very specific thing. Okay. But that is a, a responsibility of planning commissions. Um, as part of the review, the planning commissioner board shall consider the cost of providing local government services to the subdivision and what impacts the subdivision will have on environment and natural resources. So. We have some reviews here for the comprehensive plan. It's all of the above. I need to make mine, I need to modify mine to be more like yours. Adam, you do, you did a good job. Uh, yeah, so yeah, it's a community's vision for the future. Right? You want to look at where, how you've gotten to where you are. What are the trends that kind of, uh, help you anticipate where you're going? What are your goals? You know, what are your desired end state? How we're going to measure that we're going to be there and how we're going to make decisions. What's going to guide our decisions to help us get there? So all of these are part of a comprehensive plan. This is not all the above. What is the number of planning visions? Twelve. Does anybody remember what the original number was? Seven. Wow. Yeah. All right. Nice. Uh, yeah, it slowly increased. Um, but I do encourage you, if you're interested in this idea, to attend Secretary Flores' Future of Comprehensive Planning tomorrow. I think it's at one forty-five. She's going to talk about these. Um, so the answer is all the above, but we'll just quickly go over it. So, uh, residents and landowners for sure, um, business people, right? Just somebody doesn't live, may not live in your community, but they own businesses there or their employer there. They have a, a strong interest in the comprehensive plan. Government agencies, both internal and external, and any advocacy or community groups, all of those should be considered and involved as part of the planning process. I, I should make this more complicated and say comprehensive plan is required to be updated every ten years, but the answer here is true. If I said updated though, what would be the answer? False, right? It's not required to be updated, just reviewed. I'd, I'd say most jurisdictions update them. They do, but it's not, that's not what the requirement specifically says. Uh, any questions before we turn over to Chuck, who's going to get into the real nitty gritty of growth management tools?
So Joe, we have one online, uh, yes. The, the question is, we're working on a stakeholder survey for public input to assist us in developing our comprehensive plan. Are there any good reasons to collect demographic data? I haven't, I haven't answered, but I'll let you go first.
I think this is a question that, yeah, this, somebody put this question, I realized in the, um, the registration form. Well, yeah, I mean, demo, the term demographic data could mean a lot. I would definitely say yes. You know, then you could, especially if you get a large enough sample, you could see what uh, different groups in your community, you know, what their concerns are. It could be based on age, gender, race, um, where somebody's, you know, there's, you're interested in like a certain study area of part of your community. If they're, yeah, a resident or, or a business owner. Um, I, I would, I think it's, it's important to help you get a fuller sense of your community, but I'll let you also go ahead, Chuck.
So I guess my answer is somewhat like that, but it's all, it's more of, it depends. So I would encourage all jurisdictions to utilize the census information uh, and the demographic information that the Maryland Department of Planning has through our, um, state data and, uh, analysis center. It's on our website and there's a lot of data there. We're hoping to even increase the accessibility of that further. But getting to your point is if you're doing a survey and you want to really start to drill down and find out what's going on in a particular part of your community. Uh, our, our census data will probably not be able to do that as well as, as an individual survey. So you may want to have some demographic questions included in your survey. But I would cau- caution you not to do, uh, uh, be redundant with what you could easily get from the census. So, so have it be more targeted.
That's, yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. Yeah. What, what specific demographics do you want to understand better in your community and that you could use a survey for that? I think one thing I know is, is always going to be a struggle in the comprehensive planning process, trying to get public in, input is that certain demographics are more likely to engage. All right. People that have more time on their hand, property owners, um, younger folks or people with young children or children that have, they're not going to come out to the night meetings, um, people that have multiple jobs. Uh, you know, there, you have to. So that, that way, if, the, the, that, what happens then is that you have perhaps a skewed perception because a group, a certain group is overrepresented in your community and it may sound like their position or what they're seeking is what everybody is seeking in your community. So you really need to make a, an intentional, um, strategy for reaching those groups that may not be as easily reachable. Because of their busy, because they don't understand how planning works, they're not property owners, but they're still members of your community and they're still contributing, um, to, to your community. And, you know, you, you really need to make an intentional effort to reach out to them. And I think that's how demographics targeted to your community may help understand who you're reaching. Any other questions? Uh, we are amazingly on time. We're always behind and with, uh, especially with, uh, the technical difficulties earlier. I'm going to turn it over to you, Chuck, and we can advance the slides for you.
Please go ahead and advance the slides. So we're going to now start to talk about the tools that you have in your toolbox. Uh, and, uh, the, these, this toolbox, uh, is, uh, predominant, and I'll try to distinguish between those that are more county level, but, but municipal level. But these, this range of tools really covers the full gamut of things that, uh, your, your jurisdiction can cover. Next slide. So the most powerful tool that you have in your toolbox and Adam spent a lot of time talking about this is dealing with zoning regulations from that of the map itself as well as dealing with the individual text about what permitted uses are and what kind of, uh, density or intensity you want to have within those particular, uh, zoning categories. So it covers the full range of uses and, and, and the densities. And this is the typical, uh, Euclidean reference to zoning. Go ahead, next slide. So yeah, again, this is the typical map you would get and you have, uh, your, your, your core business areas. And a lot of times you would, uh, reduce the intensity as you get further away from those core areas, uh, along the way. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this is the, the traditional Euclidean separates uses into, uh, unique areas of, of, of like intensities, single family detached, low density, mixed, uh, intensity residential areas, mixed use areas, commercial areas. And, and there, there, there's this gets back to the Ambler, uh, Euclid issue where everything was pretty much laid out, separated. The benefit of that is that is you could be very simple and everything is like and treated the same. The problem about that is, is what it is creates, created the situation where everyone has to get in a car to go to the commercial or employment areas. Uh, so, uh, it, it really, uh, did not, uh, you know, mixed use was originally, as, as Joe said, I know, I live in Frederick and, and one of the things that's really unique about downtown Frederick is it's the diversity, uh, of uses that are there and people live and work in that area and don't have to drive a car anywhere. And, and that's the same thing goes in Baltimore city and many areas as well. So, uh, those, those areas of Baltimore city and Frederick, uh, were pre-Eu- Euclid zoning. Um, and, and so the new, newer zoning now starts to, to try to go back to those old days of mixed use before that. Next slide. of mixed use before that. Next slide. In addition to those standard zoning categories, zoning also allows for overlay zones. Adam talked about floating zones where you pull zoning district down on a piece of property. But overlay zones are another way to apply special status to areas. A lot of times historic districts are overlay zones. They don't change the underlying permissible uses, but they, they establish a new review process, slightly different. Overlay zones can be environmentally sensitive areas that you have it, or sometimes in recreation areas where you want to have certain amenities and/or design standards. Next slide. One of the newer approaches to zoning is form-based code. It tends to be a lot more, it can involve a lot more staff, time, resources devoted towards it. But it typically involves getting a regulatory plan, establishing performance standards. And then you, you also have some general land use types that you lay out on a map. But it allows for a lot more flexibility. And what it's intended to do is to regulate from the public, public realm and see what you, what you see from the rights of way. But it allows for intended uses to be internal to those forms and not be as rigid in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed. Next slide. So the next most powerful tool that a local jurisdiction has in its land use toolkit is the subdivision process. The subdivision process, particularly if you're dealing with new pieces of property that haven't previously been subdivided, maybe annexed into your community. It goes through the subdivision process. Usually that, that involves a preliminary subdivision, some kind of conceptual subdivision, preliminary subdivision, then laying out roads, looking out, layout, lot layouts. Where do you want to put some parks in? Maybe it was a reservation of some land that's going to be dedicated for a public school, et cetera. So that subdivision process will lay out and create new lots. And it's again, it's a, it's the division of property into one or more lots. Typically, this has ultimately been particularly municipal and non-charter. It's best with the planning commissions to do that approval. In charter counties, it may be administratively handled and not something that is done by the, 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 the planning commission. Next slide. Uh-oh, yep, uh-oh. Hold on here, folks. We have technical difficulties up. We're getting back here. Okay. Did you lose me? Did you, can you hear me? You're on mute. You can hear me? Okay, I'm gonna keep on going. Next slide. The subdivision process and subdivision regulations, you will establish lot standards, how to actually record the properties, but also dealing with the public realm and the dedication of, say, streets. Often your design standards for where the utilities will be are included in your subdivision. So one of the newest areas particularly is incorporated into subdivision is where do you put bribe in? Is it gonna be a separate conduit within the public right of way? You also may have things such as landscaping standards. So in the city of Frederick, we typically require curb, gutter, sidewalk, street trees and street lights. So those things are all specified and need to be incorporated into the subdivision regulations and then shown up on improvement plans that ultimately get approved and bonded and built as part of the subdivision process. Next slide. Can you hear me? I'm talking into the wind? Okay. Technical difficulties, folks, please forgive us one moment, please. I could post or share my screen, but I don't think the people in the audience there will see it. So please forgive and we will get momentarily back online. Oh, we're, we may, we have people? Do you, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hot spot. Yes, can you hear us, Chuck?
I can hear you, yes.
Can't hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you. We've switched to a hot spot.
Okay, switch to the hotspot. Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I still can't hear you. Barely.
Barely.
Yes. Now I can hear you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, we can hear you, we can hear you fine.
Good, good. Okay, moving on. All right. So water and sewer is the third largest area. And it's important to note here that the issue for municipalities is that, as Joe mentioned this before, the water sewer plant. Did I, oh, let me listen again. Oh, my God. Sorry, folks, this is.
Chuck, can we speak, Chuck?
Yeah, I'm here.
Chuck, can you, okay, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, this is, this is, I hate to say this is Three Stooges type of situation here, but hopefully I'm semi entertaining along the way, folks that are in the virtual world. And we're getting the screen back up again. Okay. Try again. So again, water and sewer plan, it's county level, but it's important that municipalities and their planning of their comp plans and their improvement to their community, their incremental advancement of development of water and sewer service are coordinated with the local, with the counties so that those plans are done and updated regularly. So they are updated every three years at the county level. But again, it requires local, the municipalities to participate. Again, this is a critical step in the process. If you have an APFO, adequate public facility ordinance, you need to be able to have it be consistent with this. Next slide. Do you hear me? Next slide.
I didn't think I was on it.
Can you hear me?
Chuck, run.
Next slide.
Yes, we can hear.
Okay, so water and sewer plan follows much of the typical planning process. It deals with looking at the issues of growth, looks at consistency with the comp plan. You, you want to factor in future expansion, annexations, infill development, as well as look at the types of uses that are commercial that may be high demand users of water and sewer service. They should be all part of that master planning process. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. APFO, adequate public facility ordinances. Most jurisdictions, there's 13 of them, have adopted them, 23 municipalities. Most of those jurisdictions, if not all, no, back one. All right, I'll try to do it. All right. Thanks, stay. So most of those jurisdictions focus on schools. School is the most used APFO. It is the one that is the most concerning to the residents and, and obviously influenced by growth in the communities. Water and sewer important, but not necessarily as significant as school. So school planning and coordination with local, local education agencies, the school board is critical to, to plan, to make sure you, you reserve new schools if you're in a high-growth area. We're seeing a lot now where in the, in the lower, slower growing areas or some areas that aren't growing is a consolidation of schools. As older schools get, need to get, be replaced, they have to be actually torn down. And the new school is being put in place that, that covers a larger area than before. Next slide. I can't see the new slide, so I can use my, my own. Yep. Do you want me to show, you want me to share my, my, my slides?
Sure, let's try that. At least that'll, it's not gonna wifi break, but it's gonna help with the delays.
You want me to share?
Yeah, can you turn off your video, Chuck? That might help too. I'll turn off our video.
I can do that. Well, if, do that, are you going to, do you want me to share or not?
Let's, let's just, let's, let's go. I'll keep sharing.
Let's, let's just try this. All right.
Is this the right slide, Chuck?
No, it's not the right slide and you need to put it in presentation mode if you would. Good, okay, stay there. So again, any jurisdiction can adopt them. It really is a, APFOs are not intended to be reasons to deny development. It is a break on development to have it catch up to the local standards that have been adopted. Locals are supposed to develop standards. And again, you're not, it's not intended to be used as a moratorium reason to deny development. Next slide. There is a requirement in the state law that says that if you adopted a APFO, you're report to the department of planning every two years. We do a report to the general assembly. And there's some reporting requirements. We, we encourage you to take a look at our annual report on local governments and reports. And you'll see where those development impediments are. Again, it's intended for local governments to address those impediments and not have it be a reason for a moratorium or continuous denial of development. Next slide. Hey, I'm gonna move on. I don't have any questions from online. Are there any questions in the audience? Here, now let's move on.
Questions here, Chuck.
Okay, so the rest of the growth management tools, let's, capital improvements program is a program that is done annually by the local jurisdiction. Take a part of your annual budgeting process. It's intended to be for infrastructure improvements. And it is a role for the planning commissions to determine whether or not those capital improvements are consistent with the local comprehensive plan. Next slide. Typically, your capital improvements program uses a variety of funding sources from general funds, general obligation bonds, if you're gonna bond it. Capital, or excuse me, CDPG program, if you're federal, have federal funding that you can rely upon. POS is a state program for parkland. And there's a variety of other state or federal aid programs that may be part of your capital improvements program. Next slide. Again, the process for capital improvement is very much like that of the comprehensive plan. You do an inventory of existing conditions. You look at your growth potential and you evaluate projects to meet those things. You establish criteria, prioritization. And then you have a recommended list that are then incorporated in your capital budgeting and your annual budget process. Next slide. One of, one of the most powerful tools, and this is an area that Adam may want to weigh in, but this is one of the few areas where municipalities are in the driver's seat. They do, there are provisions in the law that allow for a municipality to restrict certain uses to occur when, through the annexation process. And essentially it becomes deed restrictions on the property. And this is semi-contract zoning, but not, but it is in the public realm and it is something that is not in the back room. It is part of an ordinance that is adopted through the annexation process. But municipalities are not required to annex. They choose, property owners will often want to annex for purposes of getting the zoning for a higher density than allowed in the county, or they want to use the municipals' infrastructure. So it's one, a few times that municipalities are in the driver's seat controlling future development to their communities. Next slide. I'm assuming. Next slide. Yeah, why, I don't, it's not showing up for us in the virtual audience right now. So I'm gonna just move forward with annexation. So annexation process there has, has, there's three basic things that you have to have. It's gotta be contiguous, can't be annexed, can't be already in an incorporated area and can't create enclaves. So you have to meet these requirements as part of the process. Next slide. And they're not that difficult. As part of that process, we And they're not that difficult. As part of that process, we, department planning, you're supposed to submit these to the department planning 30 days prior to taking action. And we will then be able to advise you on consistency with the county comprehensive plan or if it's different and then, which is what we would look at in terms of any type of density. You may have to go through a process of request, the exception, if you want to develop within five years. Next slide. So the next part is development rights and responsibility agreement. So one of the things that this tries to do is deals with the issue of late vesting state of Maryland. Is that passed in 1995. This allows for the local government and a developer to come into an agreement to basically freeze the regulations with condition that as a result of the developers investing in certain things that they would then ensure the developers' rules are not going to change. And so it's valid for at least five years unless extended by mutual agreement. Next slide. But again, this is a very powerful tool that allows for that predictability if a developer is trying to do a large development project. So I mentioned earlier, the department of planning has a lot of resources on our website, but there are other sources of Mako and MML both have really great sources. We have information, we're going to need to update this slide. We have a smart growth information clearinghouse, which we actually have recently turned over to Smart Growth America and they're rebranding it. So I'm going to need to update this slide. So, but there are tools out there. I mentioned, I responded to one earlier inquiry about the issue of getting contact and asking more questions. And the department of planning's website includes references to the various regional planners. And so that's your first contact. Joe or myself are more than happy to answer any questions we have. But we want to encourage you to utilize our regional planners as your point of contact and coordination all the way. So let's go to the questions that we have on here. I'm going to read them in case of things. So zoning in Maryland can change through a comprehensive process, a piecemeal process, a referendum or a lottery. The answer is a comprehensive process. Next slide. Subdivision plans should show proposed location of streets, utilities, landscape, or A, or D, all the above, and it's D, all the above. Next slide. According to the state law, the county water and sewer land should be kept current. And that means it's to be updated every three years. B. Funding for capital improvements can occur with, which of the following? General fund, general obligation, block grant, CDBG, or all the above? All the above. Unless amended or extended by the local government body, how long does the development rights and responsibility agreement last? The answer is five years. B. Which of the following is true about newly annexed areas must be contiguous to the existing municipal boundaries? Can't be within another incorporated municipality, can't create an unincorporated enclave. The answer is D, all the above. And that is the closing next phase. So you will be getting noticed, you will, thank you for putting up with the.